All right, Bill, where are you? Okay. We are recording, Josh, where I'm gonna get this rolling. Welcome to the first meeting of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District of 2020. We have all members present. I don't even have my agenda in front of me. And as hopefully most of you know, Kent Norris resigned in December, so we are down a board member and accepting applications through January 31st. So, I know we have one application so far, but if there's other people out there that would like to apply, we would love for you to be involved. And with that, roll call. I think I covered that. Approval of consent agenda?
I approve the consent agenda.
Did you want to remove the?
Yeah. Yeah, I wanted to give a note to the board on the financial report. It is not complete in time for this month's board meeting. It will be by next month. We're migrating a lot of information over to a new software license, so we're taking it all and putting it in a new package, so we will have those shortly.
Okay. So, do you want to amend your motion to the consent agenda minus the financials?
Yes, the consent agenda minus the financials.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comments. Is it Mark? Sorry, I don't know what my piece of paper, I just had it. Oh, here it is. Mark Christie, did you want to come up now? Okay.
Mark Christie, 3184 Northeast Loop Drive in Otis. Anyway, I'm just chatting about and thanking you. I believe I sent you all an email telling you that the 3rd of July fireworks extravaganza is on. I signed the contract and we appreciate, the Neighborhood Association appreciates your generous donation of $2,000 last year, and I put in another ask this year for your support on that and would love you to consider that and maybe make a motion sometime in the next couple of months and let us know that you're in again. And we're excited. Mitch did most of the work, but we got a grant from the city which will also help in that endeavor. And then we'll also be doing our fundraising again to complete out the dollars that needed. Costs went up a little bit this year, but it's still relatively reasonable. I think we're somewhere around 13.1, 13.2 for a total cost. So, we've still got a little money to raise and we'll be excited. You can go, any of the folks that want to can again go on the D-Lake Oregon website and there's, I believe, a contribution button, still there to do that, so. And a great shout out and a big shout out to, and I know I put it in the email I sent you, but I want folks to know that one of the things that makes that possible is the great work that Bill has done in the past, as well as Julie being a helper there, getting the barge out and doing those things and bringing it back. He spent untold hours, as we know, helping that be a success, so I didn't want that to go unnoticed. Then a couple of other things outside of the Neighborhood Association I wanted to chat about, and I'm just getting caught up because as you know, I've been going 100 miles a minute, and this is probably the first meeting I've been to in a little bit. But, and I know these discussions I think you're gonna talk about, but I am tremendously concerned with the, and I know you did the survey on the invasive aquatic growth that we're seeing, and I'm just, and I know you know this, but I need to say it, I'm gonna challenge you, that needs to be a number one priority because we cannot get in the position we were in 35, 40 years ago when I was raking those type of things out of the lake. Just can't happen. So, that's one thing. And then the other thing I noticed too, and it might have been an oversight, but again, getting caught up, I looked at the agenda for this board meeting, I went back and looked at the agenda for December because I was looking to see if you'd established a protocol for the replacement of Kent, that board position. I didn't see anything in the meeting minutes, but it appeared the agenda this month is identical, maybe with the exception of one thing, to the agenda last month. So, I don't know if it was an oversight, but just...
It is in the minutes.
It is?
Yep.
That, no, but I didn't look at the minutes.
Oh, sorry, I thought you said minutes.
I looked at the agenda for December and then I looked at the agenda for January and it appeared they were the same. I was looking for a agenda topic about that position being open and whatever protocol that you were gonna do.
Oh.
Maybe I missed it, but I didn't see.
We discussed it in the last board meeting and...
Yeah, that's an oversight, my part not getting it in print on this agenda.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I just think that's really important, so if somebody wants to go back and look, they can, they can do a little research like I was trying to get caught up on.
Gotcha.
Anyway, thank you.
Um, committee reports. Sewer Committee, did you bring a resolution to sign, Josh?
Should be in your packet, I believe.
Okay. I just haven't dug deep enough.
It's a big, it's a big packet.
So, as you may recall from last meeting, we had a presentation by Brian Green, and then we had a vote to dissolve the sewer committee. Here it is, and I have a resolution right here.
You know what? I printed the right one out. There's a correction on there because it unfortunately has Bill listed as the secretary, and I didn't update it to Steve, and he's supposed to be the secretary. And I did print it out, but I left it on my desk, the actual copy with Steve.
Well, Bill is the secretary, isn't he?
No. It's Bill, I know, it's old. I don't, I think it's a formality, we certainly can write it in.
If you guys are okay with that, I'm fine with that, so.
Who is the secretary?
Me.
Oh. And the...
He used to be the secretary.
Oh, Secretary/Treasure, one position.
Yay, me.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm gonna sign this and pass it off to you.
Okay. Yeah, so, we're gonna need a motion to approve the resolution to dissolve the sewer committee.
I thought we did that last week.
We did.
Last month.
But should I read the resolution, at least the preamble?
Yeah, it probably would be a good idea to read that.
So, this is Board of Directors Resolution 2020-01, the dissolution of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District Sewer Committee. A sewer committee of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District was established by the Board of Directors Resolution 2016-2 for the purpose of reviewing legal options and requirements for extension of sewer around Devils Lake, providing information relevant to the extension of sewer around Devils Lake to stakeholders and seeking relevant input from stakeholders, determining the level of stakeholder support for extension of sewer around Devils Lake, and reporting the findings to the Dilwood Board of Directors. The committee is advisory to the Dilwood Board of Directors and was established as a public body for the purposes of Oregon Public Meetings Law and is subject to all the provisions of law as embodied in ORS 192.610 through 192.690. So, my understanding is that Brian is looking at putting together all, if not most, of the people that were on the sewer committee to a citizen committee.
Yeah, Citizen Advisory Board, correct.
To carry that forward. Special Projects and Events?
My name is Tom Rice. I'm the chairperson of the Special Projects Events and Communications Committee. And as it states on the agenda, our primary task at this point in time is organizing the first Devils Lake fishing derby, which is scheduled for May 2nd of this year. And Miles Schlessinger set up a meeting with Christine Clapp of Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Yesterday afternoon, I joined him to meet with her in Newport, and we learned a lot about their involvement in situations like this, what they're doing. She also informed us of a fishing derby that Georgia Pacific puts on in June, no, maybe it's April, I'm getting mixed up with the family one at the lake, and a contact there, which will be very good to get in touch with and get that put together. Steve Brown put together a very useful, what do we call this, kind of an org chart kind of thing, I guess, as far as responsibilities that need to be addressed to plan this derby. And we've kind of put it on the back burner through the holidays, but now that the holidays are over, I think here in the near future, we'll need to set up a meeting and get all the interested volunteers together. We've got kind of a preliminary participation from people in the Special Project, or the, excuse me, Save Our Shorelines Committee, and begin to take a look at what are the tasks that need to be done, who are the people that will undertake those, so we can be ready to go on the 2nd of May. But beyond that, oh, and thank you to Josh for taking care of the legal paperwork, I guess I could call it.
Just getting the ball rolling.
The permissions such are all in the mill. I don't think we're final approved yet, but I don't know why we wouldn't be. So, when that's done and we have the official blessings of all the agencies involved, we'll be off and running.
Great.
So, I think it'll be a lot of fun, and we'll be looking for anyone that wants to volunteer. There'll always be, there'll be something for anybody to do. Any questions?
And still scheduled for May 2nd?
Yes.
Okay. Terrific.
Pardon me? Will it be prizes for fishing?
Yes, there'll be, we're looking at having three tagged fish. There'll be big prizes for that. The first tag would be $10,000.
Wow. And you buy insurance policies for that, like at a golf tournament, right?
That pays for that, exactly.
Yeah.
A $5,000 fish and then a $2,500 fish.
Wow.
They'll be tagged that way. Yes, and it's like a hole-in-one tournament.
Yep.
It's insured. But also, a big part of the planning we need to do is to solicit sponsors, local businesses, for example, let's say Bymart. Would Bymart be willing to throw in three or four kids' fishing gear sets? Those kind of prizes would be available as well. As many local vendors and retailers in Lincoln City as we could, and I would hope they would be interested in getting involved, and we have lots of prizes that way. It could even be as raffle tickets, for example, too. Just the more the merrier, so to speak.
Yeah.
So...
People like to win stuff.
Yeah.
There is an entry fee?
Yes. And how did we finally settle on that?
Yeah, for a $10,000 prize, there better be an entry fee.
What are we looking at for an entry fee?
Josh is working on that, and he's only 35 and 50 hours, and I don't know if he's decided or if that should be a decision.
I think I'm gonna leave that to, I know Steve got some information together for organizing some volunteers and getting a couple of teams and committees ready to take this on. I think one of those was a budget committee, if I recall correctly. So, I'm, I'm gonna allow that to sit with the folks that are gonna be working on that, and I may very well be a part or, you know, can interject on those as well, but, so.
And I think, I think that's appropriate, a budget committee will figure out just what is available, what will it cost. And the other thing that came up, I sat in on the Save Our Shorelines Committee meeting this afternoon, and not to steal any Mary's thunder, but the issue came up and we'll need to address this, is invasive species. If this is as successful as we hope it is, there'll probably be more boats being put in Devils Lake from outside the Devils Lake area than ever before. And we'll need to contact the state and agencies involved and say, we need to have a way to look at these boats, look at these trailers, to make sure we aren't introducing any invasive species to our lake. So, that's just one of the many things that'll need to be addressed to make sure we've got all the bases covered.
I'm glad to hear you say that, Tom. That's, that's already moving that, that direction.
Okay, good. Good. Other questions?
No, thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Good. Save Our Shoreline?
Mary Ellen Rich, Chairman Forever of the SOS Quality Committee.
There's a reason for that, Mary Ellen.
Don't hear any volunteers. We established our 2020 goals, and they are the SOS plant sale, I'll give you more detail on that, the shoreline restoration projects, which I have no details on, but I have names, so I need to check with Kent, the invasive species, which Tom covered. So, I'll start with the SOS plant sale. We decided to piggyback onto the fishing derby on May 2nd and have a booth with brochures and plant, yeah, and then have plants there, maybe from Blake's, maybe from Connie Hansen, we'll see what we can do. But Josh, I'll need your help on, on the plants, as usual. Maybe for shoreline, it's kind of hard to get plants that drown well, you know? We'll do that with the floating gardens, but, and I'll give you a...
We should have some floating gardens at the fishing derby, so people see them.
Oh, that's a good idea. Maybe we can tow some over, yeah, I'd have to weed them.
I have mine, so...
Oh, good. Tow yours over.
Okay.
I think, oh, we needed one.
They seized one floating.
Oh, you lost it?
Yeah, it's gone.
So, we'll look for it, yeah.
I thought maybe it would end up at your house, but it obviously didn't.
It isn't, it isn't down there, so we'll look around for it. So, May 2nd, we're gonna have a booth, probably the Dilwood booth, Josh, with handouts, information, and the plants, that if they can show us that they live around the lake, they get them for a dollar each.
Nice.
Cool.
Very good.
That's my idea. But we'll see, we'll see how it works out. Maybe from Blake's, it'll be at Regatta, maybe from Blake's or Connie Hansen, they do a lot of sales, and then we'll need some advertising, too.
Mary, do you think through the committee, maybe, you're talking about invasive species and getting into that conversation, you'd be interested in maybe having ODFW or somebody that's piggybacking, do a little bit of something on that, too? Like maybe bring some tubs of invasive plants for people ID?
At our booth, oh, yeah.
As nervous as that makes me, near a lake, they're professionals. Just because there's gonna be a lot of people there, it's just a great outreach for us to...
I think we should talk about invasive species and what to do if the parrot feather, you know, is growing in your yard. I saw that article in the paper, that was really good. You know, just put a bag over it. I'm not sure about composting it. Put a bag over it and smother it and...
Cooking it somehow.
Cook it, yeah. Cook it. But get every little bit of it out of the lake, because it'll just multiply. So, that's the parrot feather one. I digress. Anyway, we need advertising and, you know, for the plant sale and that people bring their dollars to buy plants for their shoreline. And the ones that we got last May, they're growing good between the Christie's and our house.
And any of those updates you want out from the committee, and it goes for all the committees as well, get that information to me and I'll get it to Eric Johnson, our PIO, and we'll get it out on the website, and we're still working on linking the website to Facebook, but Facebook has been working great to contact people.
Okay.
We're getting really, really good numbers from that, so.
Oh, okay. Likes, like likes?
Yeah, lots of likes, lots of engagements, you know, hundreds of people looking at our posts, whereas it might take a year or two to get a few hundred people on some of our posts on the website, but, you know, Facebook is a lot more forward-facing to people than our website, you know? We're not gonna pay Google $50,000 for SEO searches.
You can have a little clicky thing for our website from Facebook.
It does, actually, just, and thanks, Mark, he's, he's great at finding those, and in the future, if you find any broken links or anything like that, I know there are definitely some other functional things, which are larger projects on the website, that are on the list, but the smaller things that are blatantly not working or not right, feel free to email me or ideas, you know, to get info out, for sure.
So, we'll have a plant sale, we'll have a fish derby, all on May 2nd, we hope it doesn't rain. The shoreline restoration projects, as I said, I have to, oh, I'm pointing over there, we're can't use to sit, I need to check with Kent, and I think we have a fourth one. We have a Rogers, a Mina, a Sills, and then there was a Judy I talked to, but I have to look back and get her again. She was going on a long trip, so I told her I'd contact her in January, and I think that might be our first one since I'm aware of her. As far as the invasive species, Josh talked to the paper about the parrot feather mill foil, and that, that's the one that's coming up in stocks that people tell you about, so just, if you can get to the root of it, pull it up, but I don't know, I haven't seen one yet, but at least get it out of there as much as you can, and don't leave anything behind that's floating, because it'll just reproduce. Also, the boat launch inspections, we feel like a lot of boats are gonna come into this fishing derby for the $10,000 prize. That should attract some people. But we want to make sure that those little crustacean things that are attached to the trailer are not there. So, what we want to do is get somebody in at the four places, the four boat launches that are main, and kind of do that two-minute inspection to make sure. And maybe there's a little bath, you know, a chemical bath that kills them, I don't know. So, I've never done that, but I don't think it takes 10 minutes, so it shouldn't hold up the fishing derby.
No, no, I think that's, excuse me, I think that's a great idea to start thinking down that road. Currently, we only have signage as our protection and certainly inviting more people to our waterways. We need to look at something a little less passive.
A lot of people are ignorant, including me, about putting a boat from one body of water to another body of water, so it would be good to have that intermittent inspection, if not shower right there.
And one of the things that goes along with that, too, and it's certainly something that we're thinking about and having board conversations about for protections on down the road to prevent any, any futures or anything else. You're never gonna have a 100%, you know, removal rate, you're, it's always a harm reduction.
Right.
But if you get, you know, one quagmire mussel or one bandit parrot feather or whatever from a boat wash station and X amount of funds, generally speaking, the destructive nature of invasive organisms, especially in a waterway that has infrastructure on it like ours, is exponentially worse than getting ahead of it. So, there are some options, there's funding and things out there we're talking about. It's a little more challenging because we don't own any of the properties where these are at. Regatta is one of our largest, that's city property, the state parks are another one, and those are, those are estate entities, so we...
They might appreciate, though, the...
Well, of course, but, but they also, you know, when they put in that infrastructure, they'll have to have budget and funding and maybe even further legislation to staff it as well, because we can put it out there, and we would hope best efforts, and you'd definitely get some improvement from having that there and people using it.
Awareness.
But if it's, yeah, if it's busy and they just go around it, you know, and there's no enforcement, it's like regulation without enforcement, so it's...
We have to start thinking of these things when we're inviting people into the lake, because we have a healthier lake that will encourage invasive species to grow.
Well, it's, it's a little, it's a little shocking, too. I had Alex do some research this week on it, and she pulled up a great article, several articles for me, about other people have done this, how do you put in a boat wash station? Who's operating them, you know, what's the cost and what's involved? And there are shockingly few actual boat wash stations, especially manned boat wash stations on Oregon lakes, so we'll...
Well, and just like we do the Boat Safety Day, I think adding on to that, you know, inspections of invasive species to that of, you know, just education, 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 and, you know, somebody has to hear something three or four times, sometimes up to seven times, for them to be like, "Oh, I'm supposed to inspect my boat trailer."
Well, and like you're saying, that's something for the committee to have a conversation about, future boat events and things we have, bringing more organizations in, get ODFW out there, the Marine Board, and whomever we need to make this happen, or DEQ. They're, they're all involved on some level with invasive species, so.
Well, if we do it right, we can become the Trophy Lake of example for other lakes, you know, because we're addressing this, 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 we did iteration, we're, you know?
Right.
It just looks really good on, when we get this going and start addressing all these other things ahead of time before they erupt into a big weed thing on the lake.
Right.
Any questions?
So, plant sale, invasive species, shoreline restoration projects, and boat launch inspections.
Yep, and talking about the life jackets, you know, we can talk about everything that we do on the lake in this booth.
Okay.
And those books that we had published, Jake, Josh, I mean, sorry.
I'll take Jake.
Yeah, Jake's good, too. The books, you have a box of them? We're gonna want those in the thing, too.
The Gordon Smart Oregon one?
Yes.
I believe we do.
Well, the ones we published.
We'll probably get some more, because I've almost given most of those out.
Oh, well, good. That's good.
They've been pretty popular.
In a box. Okay, maybe we should get, get some more for that booth then, because those are very handy for reference on what's invasive and what's not.
Right.
Okay. Any questions?
Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks for your hard work, Mary Ellen.
Thanks, Mary.
We appreciate it.
District Projects and Operations?
It's my turn again. Some of this information's old, as we discussed earlier, a couple of things need to be updated, for sure. There has not been a lot of action and activity in the district over the holiday season. Lots of people have been on and off the radar, and it's been pretty non-eventful, which is a good thing. So, our aeration project has had no issues. I went over and checked it right before the meeting through all the power outages. It hasn't even thrown an error code on our driver, so that's been working out excellent. You know, I left a new rubber hose in there the past couple of months, because that's, since its install, has been fine. Video project, there's no update on, we're working towards that, and getting the second location installed still. The shoreline pro-aerator, I did need installed, and that was an oversight when I put the agenda together. It has been operating at Knolls at Blue Heron Landing for a couple of weeks now, I believe, since Green Line Electrical got the new tap installed on it. No issues with that. Flood protection project, a lot of this information is background in here, and I'll be peeling it out in the next, the next board meeting. I left some of it in, because we did finally settle on the track hoe, track hoe removal as a method after conversations with ODFW. There was a little back and forth even this last month to maybe do suction dredging, but ultimately it was decided this was the best way to do it. We set the permit up, I've had Tom working on that, to excavate two channels, a north channel and a south channel, approximately 400 to 500 cubic yards of total removed material, but we're, we are setting this up as a maintenance permit on the east side of the bridge, just like we do the west side of the bridge. So, when we have these events that we were discussing earlier, you know, 30-foot seas and 17-foot tides, which are becoming the norm many places, and certainly for us right here on the coast, it's, it's gonna be a necessary regulatory action that we're allowed to clear that out if no one else is taking responsibility to do it. The city has partnered with us as far as some of the permitting, definitely with the cost sharing as of late, that's been excellent, that they're sharing 50% of the cost with us on that. We have everything prepared, rather, Tom has the entire permit completed at the moment. We went to submit it today, we found out we have another core contact, this is the third one in less than two years of this permit, and a whole new form that's been out for four weeks. So, we are translating the info over onto the new form. The reason for the change in the new form is now, it's not only gonna be Core DSL, but it's Core DSL and DEQ, which we have great, a great conversation with DEQ, they know the provenance of the lake and what we're trying to do, and we'll foresee there being any holdbacks on that. However, once we get this all translated over, the permit for what I had just described for removal will be in. We have also had a conversation with John Spengler of ODFW. I believe we'll be able to start the work in September, once we gain approval, so we potentially won't have to wait for the in-water work period, which would be great. So, the sooner the better to get it out.
Yeah, it seems to make sense to me to do it when the water level is at its lowest.
That was, that's the idea, is that would be best for everyone and everything.
Well, and even for all the species.
Well, and if you look at, and you really look at the yardage that's been deposited there and just the linear feet, it's, it's gonna aid majorly in fish passage.
Right.
To clear that channel out. That's one of the issues we have, you know, millions of dollars of culvert work needing to be done in the watersheds is for that exact reason, is to cut a hole, so the water and the fish can go through, which is exactly what we're gonna be doing, except we'll be, you know, protecting the residences around the lake and a fish passage project, and in some respects, probably water quality having a better hydrology, so. But we're moving forward on that, so no, nothing is stalling out, which is great. The water quality briefing is the same as it was. I have not been out sampling. For about two weeks, the weather has been poor on the water, to say the best. Bill knows. So, I'll be updating that very soon. I've been trying to get out in the winter, even in the bad weather, at least once a month, every couple of weeks, just to get a better picture with the equipment that we have. General Operations, the financial review has been...
Hey, Josh, can I stop you here?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the Aquatex report.
Oh, I was gonna get that in, I added it in to another heading, because I didn't write in.
Oh, you did.
Well, and that was another thing here, we're going to do, moving forward with the agenda, since we have more things that have came on the radar, so now, under District Projects and Operations, I will be adding headers in for vegetation management, and that'll include conversations relating to grass carp and our monitoring of vegetation and harvesting and treatments and whatever we're gonna do, so we can have that in a nice discussion and package. we're going to do, so we can have that in a nice discussion and package. And then also added an action item for the website, because it's going to be an ongoing work, too, and that'll be under General Operations, I believe. But we can go ahead and talk about that. Vegetation Management. So what about the Aquitex report? Do we...
So, well, it was released, and so the board, I believe, has all looked at the So do you believe, as per our contract, that it was a complete report? We've accepted the final, correct?
I believe so, yeah. All the information we contracted from them was fulfilled.
So where can the public view the entire report?
I will release it after tonight. I'll put it up on our website and Facebook. It'll be on the front blog page, so...
Just a comment about it, I know going, prior to, or going into the contract, prior to going into it, we had asked some specific things of the company, and I think that they did cover them very well. And would like to remind everybody that the reason that we felt it was so important to have this scanning, if you will, of the lake, was to get some updated information, because our information that the board had was so outdated. So I felt that the report was very thorough and updated some of the depth ranges. I don't know that we have compared to the old mapping of the lake. For the vegetation part, we felt it was real important to have a contractor actually scan the entire lake and identify the vegetation, which I felt they found probably more than any of us had, especially when it comes to the parrot feather. But it was stated in the report, due to the timing of the year, and, which is, you know, late fall, winter, that because of the water temperature, it may have not have gotten everything, because obviously some of the plants during cold water period would scale back.
Shrinkage.
Shrinkage, yeah. Die off, which is good, because we have a lot of water going through the lake and it can flow out to the ocean. But I think it's just important to remind everybody that this is going to be an ongoing process, I believe, and we'll budget for it in the next budget cycle. I think it's a good starting point for us, and I would invite the public to look at it and give any comments back, so that when we do contract again, and I would like to do it preferably at the end of the summer, when the water temperature's there, and I think we're going to see more growth this year than we did last summer due to the grass carp. So I just wanted to get it out there and invite people to look at the report and know that it's an updated report and that we're going to budget for another report when, the end of the summer, basically.
Well, it's going to become part of our regular monitoring, like you're saying, you know, we're going to treat it however we figure out to treat the individual issues related to vegetation, and we're going to report on it. We'll have to go back and recheck ourselves all the time, just like we do with our water quality, only it'll be more focused around vegetation in the lake and not as general as all the water.
Well, I think, too, kind of piggybacking off of what Mr. Christie had said, this vegetation in the lake has to be this board's number-one priority, and we have to get ahead of it. We have to look at options, and I noticed on the agenda you had requested a proposal for options from a couple of different companies. Have you received anything back?
I have been in touch with them, and like I said, the holidays have pretty much halted a lot of work. No one's getting a lot of anything through to me very promptly, 'tis the season. But I did touch base with him late last week. He's aware he's going to get us a proposal and estimate together for, from, that's C-Pro, that one will be coming from.
And you said that you're hoping to do the first application in May?
I think April, May was what they had recommended.
Yeah, so for those who didn't remember the discussion on how you get rid of parrot feather, harvesting it is not a good way. It actually spreads it, so you have to be very careful. But herbicides seem to be the most effective tool that you can do, but we're researching the options, and I just want to express again, it's our number-one priority.
Have you guys given such a report, or have you given an overview of what you're thinking of?
The report will have all that in it, Mark. I'll get it out. I wanted to run it through tonight, if there was any public board discussion, and then release it out to public. It's very comprehensive, it's very readable, and if anyone individually has any questions, you've got my number and information, so I'd be more than happy to translate or answer any of that. One of the biggest things we found from it, excuse me, and what I had them concentrate on, was actually the parrot feather as an invasive, since we saw it was becoming prolific. And they found a lot of what we're thinking, and that's why I was really happy to hear Tom say that earlier, and Mary with things like the boat ramps. Our three highest concentrations that they identified were at our public access points. They're at Regatta Park, they're at Holmes Road, and they're at Brown Bear. Once again, you know, it's pretty clear, and you'll see that when it comes up, too. There's even refresh, new bathymetry, so we have new depths on there. So as we move forward, we'll see if the aeration projects and spots are affecting the sediment on the bottom, and that'll be another component of redoing this, this monitoring of plan. We'll be, keep a better handle on everything, but in particular, the vegetation management, that is what this firm does. They are vegetation management people.
It is just a recommendation, my recommendation, it's great that that's available for us to go look, but what I think would be important to see is a manager's snapshot. You take those, whatever it is, 50 pages, condense it into...
It's six.
It's not really a big report.
It's like six or eight pages, yeah.
Not count.
Yeah, that's what I said, it's not a big...
It's very easily readable, it has pretty pictures.
And you haven't seen it, so you don't know, so I realize that, yeah.
It's not your typical scientific report. It's very, I mean...
Yeah, well, there is a couple pages of GPS coordinates that don't mean anything, just to reference to, if you like to read those.
But yeah, the report in itself and everything you need to know can be read in five minutes.
And along those lines, Mark, after I release it, I'll tie all this into the Facebook page, and I'll get with Eric, and I can, you know, I don't mind putting a summary.
That was part of that contract. Prior to going into the contract, we had read prior reports, and I think Josh and I had both communicated that we wanted it delivered a little bit differently. So if you look at that and you have ideas, since they're under contract, we can get them to format it however is useful.
Yeah, hopefully what you'll end up doing also is taking that information in comparison to what had already been done, and then have a, whether it's a board workshop or discussion, on how you take that information and translate it into an action.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Another quick update, under the action items here for the D River and flood control, I have been monitoring the lower lake inflow and outflow, and we haven't had much change. That volume of sediment is only going to keep depositing from everything that I've seen, even after we take the logs out, not that we don't need to continue doing that as well, but I have not seen a great effect on that.
Even with the higher water flow?
Unfortunately, there's, and you can look at it through the Google Earth Satellite Maps, just click year by year on historical imagery, and you can literally watch it creep out, you know, yards and yards at a time over the years. New business, I think that's all I have for Project and Operations. Any questions on any of that? Anyone? General Operations, the district's financial review is complete. There were no major issues noted. Sign that and turn it in. 2019's, or 2018's financial review, rather, is complete. The district manager's contract, that would be me renewal, was up for renewal December 1st, and we have signed a new contract in place, so I'll be here for another year, or until you get tired of me, so... New business action item, Tina signed off on the district credit card limit increase. TLC wanted meeting minutes from it. I've dropped them off. Last time, it took a couple of back and forths with them to get it. It's not a huge thing, it's on my agenda, I'll get that taken care of. Our non-agenda items, emergency planning, once again, I think that's going to be like our website and one of our ongoing things. It's going to be something that I think we should always have a conversation, we can always mention it on the agenda. I have nothing new to mention from that, or no further updates. If anyone else does, please, you know, let me know.
Well, it's kind of interesting, we had this conversation quite a while ago, and although I was in Arizona this last three weeks, it was kind of interesting to watch the social media, the local social media, about things that were happening at the lake. On Nextdoor, there's a dock floating, I saw it on Facebook, too. But I, you know, just encouraging and being part of that, so that the people who live here seasonally, you know, the emergency plan doesn't have to take a lot of time. I think it's getting and coordinating the groups of people, letting them know that there are already tools out there, like Nextdoor, to be able to communicate and be able to give alerts. I don't know if you've ever received an alert on Nextdoor, but it's immediate on your phone. But I think as far as the emergency plan, they're already doing it. I think it's just us promoting that it's good communication around the lake.
And along those lines, I'll say Lincoln County Sheriff's Office has done a great job. Deputies Doherty and Lopez working with us on the lake in both our events and management things, when we have a derelict boat, or a jet ski on fire, or picnic table, or whatever, they're on top of it, and they have really good communication with the district.
Let's see, Josh, I have a few things. The fireworks funding, can you put that on the agenda for next month, please?
Got it.
And then I think that we should, under the probably water quality briefing, an action item should be the wash stations and just exploring, you know, what our options are, funding, et cetera. Do we have a logoed booth tent?
I believe our pop-up is, the one we have in storage.
It's logoed?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. I was just thinking that if we don't, it would be nice to get one for the fishing derby and any other events.
I think it is. We just haven't had a lot of events to pull it out at the past couple of weeks.
And then, I don't know what section to put this under, but the Thompson Creek Cleanout, I'd like to keep that on an action item as well.
Gotcha.
And I do...
Oh, I, under action item, okay, I got you. I have it under the water quality briefing, but I, it's not an action item yet.
Right. I think it needs to be, I mean, I know that it's, it sounds like it's more of a challenge than what we thought, but I would like to keep exploring that. And then the only other thing, since we've had the aeration system for an entire year now, is there a way to put together a before-and-after table of the monthly water testing?
I already had Alex table all that up, and I can send it to you whenever you would like it. From 2017, though, when we took the EXO, there's some previous information I haven't had put in yet, like the year that Tom deployed the SOND, the data logger.
Okay.
At Sandpoint. So my records that I have compiled, like you're saying, are from 2017, I believe, July-ish up until two weeks ago.
I just think it would be cool to see, like, you know, what the DO did prior to the aeration system in versus...
It is, and you can see it, it's really neat. You can see last year, you can see the 2018 year, which was, which was pre-aeration, and I know what the data looks like in 2016 and previously, and most of us do, we're classified as that eutrophic lake, it was no surprise.
Right.
The new DO shows it starkly different.
Right.
I mean, it shows that pattern from it dipping down and all the way up, all the way through the summer.
If you can get the NewsGuard to run an article on that of, you know, a year after the aeration system, I mean, the aeration system is still new and exciting, and, you know, one year, it would be cool, because, I mean, we just hit the anniversary a month ago, or six weeks ago. So I think it would be cool to do, you know, a year in review of, here's what we gained, so people know that it's been effective. I mean, I think people know, just by the people that look at the water of the lake, but a lot of people don't.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, and I have a...
I think that'd be really cool. And just, I'm assuming most people know, but we have huge king tides forecasted for Friday and mostly Saturday with high swells as well, so I'm assuming that Devil's Lake or the D River will be choked off again, but we are well aware of that and will be monitoring and have it cleaned out if it's necessary. And I think that's all I have. Anybody else?
I had a comment, if I could. So the legislature last session actually, Senate Bill 445 is requiring that the Oregon Invasive Species Council submit a biannual report to the Legislative Assembly. They're revising the council membership and appropriates funds, additional funds to the council. I've been doing some research, to be honest with you, I didn't even know that there was an invasive species council. Gave the information to Josh. They have some funding and grants, and from what I see in their website, they need their priorities probably realigned, and I think the legislature has recognized that. I think we need to be in contact with them, just because where the lake has been, where we were last year, and where we think we're going with invasive species. They do have information about boat washing stations also on there. So I think it's just another avenue in, from my past history working with the legislature, when they give additional funding and ask for a report back, it's a good time to jump in there and give them new items to look at, new information. That's all.
Kathy, do you have anything? I'm good. Bill, do you have anything to add? Anybody else? All right, with that, oh, Miles.
I was wondering if for our fishing derby, are there portable boat washing stations that we could give a, give an invitation to help me to be at our fishing derby?
I will. Alex is supposed to be in next week. I'll have her chase that down and see if she can find that. No problem. That's a good idea.
Yeah. The biggest problem with those is where the water runs off to, obviously.
Yeah, and that's one of the challenges we...
That's always the challenge.
We're having, yeah, as we're limiting every event, everything in Lincoln City.
Everything goes downhill.
Parking space, yeah, and it's downhill, so...
Path of least resistance around the lake.
I recall that being an issue with, the last board was installing a boat cleaning station, and, yeah, the diversity of the wastewater is quite a challenge.
Right.
To do with it. Doesn't mean we shouldn't look at it, no?
Yeah, yeah. Well, and maybe someone like ODFW who owns the property, we can assist that conversation to make it happen. As much as I would love to do everything we need to do on the lake directly, there's only so much we can handle, and they won't let us excavate their parking lot.
Right.
All right. With that being said, we are adj... With that being said, we are adjourned. See you next month.